Did this meeting get advertised?
Yes.
And we'll do this pledge. So do we do this pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the public, the citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do roll call Dan D'Urrin, Ben Hub, Jeff Corpenney?
Yes.
You want me to just do the fire levy first and get that out of the way? I did get the certification back from the auditor. And so we need to pass a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10 million mill limitation. This is again, just a renewal, not a replacement.
I move that we adopt the resolution for getting us on the ballot for November.
Sir, a second.
Oh, a second.
Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes. That needs signed, right?
Actually, no, I just fill your names in.
The resolution from last meeting sufficient, then?
Yes.
Representative here for the other two pieces of business.
There we go. Did we talk about the next one, the fire department?
Sure, because I don't know anything about it.
I spoke with Ted from the fire department. He wasn't able to make it this morning. He has something else committed. He said the deadline for that's not till after our business meeting, so he'll be at our next business meeting to talk to us about that. Like Zed, he just needs to ask to use us as a host of Township, so. He said it'd be pretty cut and dried quick when he comes in the business meeting, so he will make it there.
You don't have a copy of this proposal or anything? Any chance we can have that prior to the meeting?
Yeah, I can ask them to mess it up, sure. If I can get it, then I'll either get you a hard copy or have you know it here.
And we need to talk about the nature works grant. Do you want to just have them explain what they're doing?
I received some of it. Spoke to you and you've got a copy. Did you get the email that was sent to you last night?
No.
That late 11:00 something last night, I ordered one too.
What exactly is it, this? It's just online?
Yep, that's the grant application.
So the deadline, we're looking at postmarked September 1st, 2014, if you deal with.
Thank you, Tyler. I think we asked people here, if you guys want to speak on it a little bit? Would you like to speak?
Yes, we actually have applied for some various things that we needed to discuss with the trustees because the items that we found are things that people have actually told us that they would like to see in the park, like a drinking fountain, rubber mulch, because some of their children have asthma. So it's a health issue. There's two rock benches out there, both of which are broken. And if we got commercial benches, they would hold up better and be longer, last longer. Sun shades for over the playground equipment so that the children could use them, use it through the heat of the day.
Are you saying this is all the things you included in the grant?
It's things that we're asking the trustees if they want to include in the grant.
Okay.
These are things that we've talked to people and these are things that people have suggested that they would like to see in the park. They would like to see the spring animals that little kids play on. New chain of tents. A new marquee sign. New flower planters. Sealers for the picnic tables and the shelter house. A new rules and regulations sign because the one there is torn. A new floor for the community building. Paint and primers for the community boards. A bike rack and trash cans. Some of the things we did get prices on. Other things we have not gotten prices on yet. One thing with asking for a nature works grant, the more times you ask for the grant, the less points you get. So if you're going to ask for the grant, the lady said that you might as well ask for as much as you can.
Who was that?
Her email address, it's Fitch is her last name. Her email address, I believe, is on that cover letter. Yeah, Mary Fitch.
Do you have that, Jenny?
It's on the, it's on the-
It's on the cover letter.
Oh, on their application, okay.
Yes, the first thing. So did anyone have any questions about the items that?
I mean, I, like I said, when I received that last night that I forwarded on, the things that you said, I mean, I think they're all legitimate, reasonable things to ask for. You know, that we could use in the park. I don't see a problem with any of them.
The one thing that the trustees, to even proceed with this, it's like you have to set aside a certain amount of money. It has to be a set in the budget, a separate line in the budget so that they can see that we do have some funding available.
Yeah, we did that last time, too.
Yeah, and they want to know-
Do you know how much it says on that last time?
It's a percentage, isn't it, of what?
I think so.
Are you talking about a matching funds required on this?
The matching funds was a separate form that we have to fill out. But yes, there is a percentage that needs set aside.
For the last time, was it 20% or 25%?
I can't remember how much it was.
Are these your figures on this form, full D here, cost analysis schedule? I noticed these other ones don't have, it looks like there's information entered in that. Is that from you?
Yes.
So you have to fill this out already then, at least parts of it? And then that's your narrative?
Yes. And each one of the narratives has numbered to match the pages in the grant.
So these are the, these are the ones, you're basing these numbers on estimates from some of these items that you've gathered?
Yes. We're still waiting on estimates from the fence. Drinking fountain. Silver sun shades. Meyer Design will give us a price as soon as we know what size area we want covered.
You had talked to Meyer Design, sent to get an updated proposed layout for the grant, then?
Yes.
Is that one's an older version, if it's dated? Say it again.
Probably 2010.
Do you have the other supporting? All that has to go with it, anything that you mentioned here that would be supporting it? Documentation, I didn't have a chance to see this yet, I understand. Ben got it last night.
And that does need updated because I don't have the spring animals, the bike rack, trash cans.
Both of these you're talking about need updated, narrative and the?
I may have been on the pricing, but I don't have them in the narrative. And I don't think, oh, I'm not sure I mentioned the information box either. To put on the outside of the building so flyers could be put in it.
You're talking about a torn sign, you're talking about the weapons sign on the building?
No, that was kind of a rules and regulations sign that we thought. This is like an information box that they have up at Licking Township.
No, I'm talking about prior, you mentioned that there was, didn't you say a torn sign? Are you referring to the weapons?
Yes.
Did you want to read her narrative so we can? Dan can hear it, because I know he doesn't have email anyhow, so he can't, or he wants to review it. Because the deadline here, it's the first part of the application, it says postmarked by September 1st, so.
Yeah, your next meeting, everything has to be finalized. There is a form that we do have to approve, Jenny needs to sign, and it needs to be sent registered mail through twenty seat.
If we decide to do this, would it be okay if we review this, the business meeting? You know, if any of us had any changes, we could discuss that. And then what's the date of the meeting, the next meeting?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth?
What means that?
Next business meeting.
Our meeting.
So then that would give four or five days to-
Is that enough time to, if we change anything?
Yes.
That's enough time, though. And then that way you'll have your final numbers on everything and-
So how much are you applying for?
We haven't added it up, but the maximum that Licking County can receive is forty-eight thousand and some dollars.
That's for the whole county?
For the entire county. If no one else applies for any, we could possibly get it all.
Now, if we apply for all of it and they are giving other people money, can, will they just give us some of the money, maybe? Yeah, okay.
What was that, no?
Yes.
Oh, they would?
Yeah.
They would have to adjust whatever the proposal was to do that. What I need to know, I think it's really important here, in the past when we've done this, we always had supporting funds. So we weren't taking money out of pocket, filling in that type of thing, so. You know, I need to find out, if you don't know the exact matching amount. Of course, it's usually, there it is right there. Matching funds, a minimum 25% match is required for all projects, so. This has got to come from somewhere. I know that I've asked for records for, with this investigation, all of the park committee funds. When I get that, I can review all that and know all the numbers. I know in the past, there were all these efforts to do that with the nature's works. Grant last time was successful, Michael Pitcher had come up with some very resourceful ways for us to be able to do that, and there are other grants that have been, did you include all the grants that we've successfully gotten within the narrative?
No, I didn't. I did include the other nature works grant that we had gotten.
I don't remember paying that much out for that.
We saw inclined work.
We did a lot of inclined work.
Right. And that's what-
Do they consider inclined work matching funds?
If, well, those forms that we filled out in the past, yes. And the same thing, like they credit any equipment that you need to use. If you're going to do the labor. They actually have on their website how much, if you're going to use a dump truck for an hour.
Right, right, the cost of what that would be, sure.
That all has to be done in advance?
Exactly.
So you have to-
Right, and obviously we could supply all the equipment, you know, if needed.
And that's something that we did need to know to put in our form. What equipment would be used, how many hours you think you would use it, then we can put that in our cost analysis.
Sure.
We were going to hand out volunteer forms, which also offsets about 25%.
Jenny, could you provide everybody with a copy of the last grant information? It'll give us a comparison of what the-
Do you want a copy of the last grant?
I'd like, I need it before we meet again to review it.
It's like 27 pages and then some.
I don't need one.
If you don't want to make a copy, maybe you can leave it down here and come down and review it, but I need to, I need to review that because this matching fund part is a critical part of this.
I think we used all of it.
I think, I think last time it was.
Yeah, it's amazing.
I don't remember paying much at all.
No, I don't think we did.
I can't remember an exact amount, and I can look back. What, do you know what year that was? I can look at that, I'll look at that.
Now, we need to know how much is in the park fund. Now, if you feel of other record requests, then I'll, I'll have authority of. Funds is something we need to look at. Just roughly add these up here without several items. What's the minimum that you're wanting to, this adds up to at least nine, 10,000, doesn't it?
It's more than that, because the one item is $10,000.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, the mulch is $10,000.
Oh, okay, I didn't see the decimal. So, so the entire thing is 11, 12,000 minimum if you're using these.
That price includes taking the old mulch out and the-
No, that just includes the new mulch. $10,000.
Okay, this is the rubber geo-
Yeah, it's maintenance related.
And the geotech, yeah, geotech fabric. 20-year guarantee on it.
Did you get more than one quote on this, or is this through Meyer Designs for that part, or?
No, this isn't through Meyer Designs, but we are getting a quote from Meyer, so we have two comparisons.
For that item, or are there anything else on there?
From Meyer Design.
Well, from them or anyone else. The quotes you got, or you just got those to get rough estimates of what it might cost from somebody?
Yes.
So the minimum, it looks like 10, 12,000 without?
We're probably going to be at least 30,000 because we figure by the time we get the fence and everything, it'll be close to 30,000.
So you're going to be asking for roughly 30,000, the grant itself is what you're proposing that we, Township? Ask for 30,000?
Or more. Until we add everything up, we can give you that final figure at your meeting.
Yeah.
So it's going to be somewhere between 30,000 and the 48,000, the maximum.
Each time you apply for this grant, you lose points. Like we've already lost 25 points because this is our second application.
You're talking about the successful one we got?
Yes.
That doesn't seem right, does it?
You get 25 point bonus if it's your first time for applying for the grant.
So we had it advanced that time? Is that point scheduled here, too?
Yes, it is.
Did you want to read the-
We've tried to address so that we can get the most points. Like our rules and regulations sign, if it's in two languages, you get extra points for that.
Did you want to read this for Dan to hear, and all of us to hear it, really?
Go ahead, if you want to.
Do you want to do that?
No, I don't.
We can all read it. I mean, we've got to the next meeting to read it.
Okay, that's fine.
We all have a copy.
So what else do you need from us today?
I think that's everything, it's just that you need to put it in the budget.
So we need to think about if we can allocate any money towards that, so we want to have that by the next business meeting.
That's 25% of whatever amount is, is what we've got to come up with.
Sure. But also, if we could do inclined stuff, you know, as far as equipment and all that. If you guys have questions, you know, whatever equipment that we have or whatever, let me know. And I'll let you know. Some of the stuff I might not know, like how long is it going to take to remove that mulch? Probably rough guess it, it'd give you a pretty close idea.
What's the current balance in the park fund?
I don't know.
Well, we'll put your name, just in case.
And you include that, too, because then we need to know what we have.
Yeah, another thing that they have in there is like what fundraisers we've had to help offset, help man, help maintain.
Sure.
You've got that in here?
Yes, it's in there.
How much have, in 2014, how much has your friend's group raised?
Approximately $300.
That's been deposited in the park fund?
No.
What about the money that the the Easter event that the seniors had a big sale?
It's been deposited.
That was-
That's in addition to the 300?
Yes.
I forget how much it was, like-
It was almost 200, I think.
Yeah, 186 or something like that.
So, but we still have a balance in there, don't we, Jenny?
Yeah.
I've never been in this forum before, this one, have around people, have people put it down on, for 80 days or whatever. We want to do that, right?
Yes, and they do a lot, $15 per hour for each hour pledged.
Okay. Do we need a motion, do we need to-
I don't think we do.
Just let it go, just fine.
I mean-
Start blocking it?
I don't think we need a motion until it's done and we're going to do it. I mean, unless you guys just want to, just to let them proceed.
Sure.
For clarification here, at the last meeting, it was kind of revealed that there's two friends of Bowling Green Township now, is this, what entity are you?
We are Friends of Bowling Green Township.
And you say you have a board now?
Yes.
So it's, I assume you're the spokesman or president?
That's not really on the agenda today.
Well, I'm trying, these are people presenting this, I want to know who they are. Because it's kind of confusing.
They're residents of the township.
So you're the president, is that right?
Who elected you president?
And you said Ed Monroe's handling your mind?
Yes.
And who else is involved with the narrative here and what they're deciding that they want? Who, you know, is it just you?
Lisa Monroe, Dee Cryer, Terry Gardner.
And do you have meeting minutes to provide from your meetings?
No. Lisa may have some.
Is she the, is there a secretary?
Yes.
What are your other officers, then? You've got a president, vice pres, who's the vice president?
I don't think that's relevant to this meeting, really.
It is to me.
Well, just because it is to you, that I don't think that's relevant to this meeting.
It's relevant to this, to me, and I need to know.
That's it, your coffee or whatever?
Well, there's an entity here that's coming forward that wants us to-
Can we just consider them residents of the township, they're presenting a grant to us?
Okay, sure, so we have-
Okay, so that's just topic there.
So we have resident Patty Rowland, resident Ed Monroe, resident Dee Cryer, and then some of your other friends don't reside in the township. Is that right?
And the relevant, and the relevant to those questions?
So is it, is it sufficient to do this at our next meeting, or do we need is three or four days sufficient amount of time to get this deadline in, Jenny? From the time we have? Because we're going to, we're going to review it individually. Hopefully you'll get all the information that I know I need to look at. And that will hopefully be several days prior to the meeting. Is there sufficient time from the meeting, from the time we have a chance to convene again and discuss it?
I should already answer that question.
I'm asking you. We haven't even, you know, the public hasn't even heard anything of, you know, you haven't read the narrative or anything. Is there a place where the public can view this preliminary?
I got a good idea.
If anybody wants a copy, tell me and I'll email it to you.
Go ahead and read it, Jeff. It's a great idea, Jeff.
I'll review it, just like everyone else is. You say email, you're at the request, am I physically reading?
If you'd like to, go ahead.
Okay, this is what Patty's Friends of Bowling Green Township is presenting us.
It takes us that important?
Patty, I just noticed one page here that's got stuff filled in, is there more on this application? Or just the financial part, it's all in the narrative?
No, there's a lot filled in on the different pages.
More than just the one page?
Yes.
Oh, I'll just read the narrative then, because I'd have to comb through to find where that is. Okay, they're presenting this. And it looks like it's structured well, along with the way it's in here numerically. Justification of meeting number one. The community park in Bowling Green Township is built by people of all ages and is the only park within 15-mile radius. More than 1,700 people are served by the park, including more than 450 children. Park is located along the historic national road, Route 40.
Are you going to take notes while you're reading this?
Yeah, I am.
Oh, I don't want to talk for that.
Well, I don't want to interrupt reading it to interject things that they come up with.
Can you put that online?
For example, you know, this information, did you utilize the most per census to get this?
Or I can give anybody a copy that wants a copy.
Okay. Well, I'm going to change the idea here.
It's just one example, that's a good source, and in past grants I've applied for, it references that we got that from that source. Do you reference any other sources here, too? I just noticed somewhere here it said about 88, that's coming up, 88 requirements, do you have source documents that will be attached to this?
Yes.
Okay, I'll continue.
Now, I'll just make a motion, Jenny, go ahead and post that online so anybody can review it, that'll give us time to review it, and then the public time to review it.
Motion is moved, is it seconded?
Roll call, Dan?
Please read the motion, just clarification.
Ben made a motion to put the narrative online so that everybody can read it. Jeff?
Discussion, when will you be able to get that done?
In a couple of days.
Okay.
It should be on there.
All right, you want to vote yes? Did you do all three?
Will you read that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I move to adjourn, business complete.
We do have one other grant we wanted to mention, that we're looking at the deadline for it is the 29th of August. We're asking for $100,000 to redo the Township Hall and the community building.
What kind of grant is that?
It's through Lowe's, we do not have to have matching funds. They do all, they provide all materials, they come in and redo everything.
What was the deadline for that?
October 29th.
Does this sit here?
Yes.
I move to adjourn, business complete that we advertised we were having today.
Do you guys see anything else from us before the visit?
Actually, on the Lowe's grant, we would like something so that we can go ahead and proceed with that.
I know a little bit about it. It was brought to my attention, I talked to Patty about it. And I also spoke with a gentleman from Lowe's who came out the other day. Spoke with me about it, looked at our building, our meeting building here. Was in the community building, just very briefly looked at a few things. It's up to a $100,000 grant to help rehab, rehab costs. So I kind of coordinated with him a little bit, he's going to, supposed to get back to me today or tomorrow, once he answers on a few things. So I guess I'll kind of work with them, or I'll take charge of it, whatever, to see if maybe we can I guess receive some grant money to help us do some rehab projects here in the building. There's a, you can read the paper that was given to you. So the deadline is August 29th, which will be after our meeting, so myself or Patty will have the information for the business meeting. A lot of these grants are kind of time sensitive, when you find out about them, then, you know, you don't have very long to to get them back in, so. Anything else you want to add on? Nothing else? All right, I'll make a motion with you.
Is that good?
Hey, um, would you want to leave Boston, let's find you out, get some sleep, Ben coming getting? Okay, because the bus, you need to sleep. The bus breath all night. So, just waking up the night.
He kind of come.
I'm going to stand next to him, he don't care.
Where's the key to this, this door here?
Yeah, go to bed.
Ben, where's the key to this door, I noticed it's locked.
Yeah, um. And, yeah, I forgot to call because we had to know if it was hydric, H-Y-D-R-I-C, hydric soil. Oh, yeah, we need a Mr. Paul rental in the building from last year to this year. So show that we've got money to maintain the park and the rental of the building.
Patty. You say that this, how much time is needed for this Lowe's grant?
The deadline is August twenty-ninth. Has to be within two thousand and twenty-nine. Submitted the twenty-
That only gives us like three days.
Yes.
For this thing, we haven't even discussed it.
Damn thing to do with that park Patty, I'm telling you now.
The park was my idea.
No, it wasn't. Your, your husband wasn't even around here, you goddamn dummy.
Look in the minutes that Bill Davy took in nineteen eighty-four. I suggested a park for this township in nineteen eighty-four. Nineteen eighty-four, Jack, I suggested a park for the township.
Your mouth, that's all you've ever done is mouth.
Anyways, the twenty-ninth is the deadline, it has to be submitted.